Okay.
You guys want to come down? For the 13th or 14th?
Jennifer's latest ten minutes earlier.
I didn't think I was gonna, I did not think I was gonna make it.
Okay. You can just bring that up when we get to that. I'm gonna say.
I know.
Yeah.
About the construction on 83.
Yeah.
About the pre-meeting. Ask her.
Okay. It is one o'clock. It is time for our regularly scheduled meeting Tuesday, May 7. We'll go ahead and see if, ask Madam Clerk, do we have a form?
Yes, Mayor.
And then if you would, please stand with me for the prayer and invitation.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the amazing weather that we have. Lord, we just ask that you continue to bless us with the amazing warm weather, the sun, the rain, everything that you provide, Lord. We just ask also that you be with us today in this room, help us to get through the items of discussion, Lord, with open hearts and open minds. Lord, we ask that you just also continue to be with our firemen, our policemen, our EMTs, everyone who is out there protecting people, Lord. We ask that you protect them. Be with our community, Lord, be with those out and being in, being in our community, providing help, just be with their and also with their families, Lord. We ask that you just bless us all. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay. First item up, we have the approval of the minutes from the last regular meeting, which if there are no corrections, will stand approved. Correction, sir? Stand approved. Okay. So now is the time we have a public comment. This is a time where anybody in the audience would like to come and speak about items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you just come up to the mic and you'll have five minutes. Please state your name and we'll open that up now. I don't see anyone coming, so Matt?
All right. We'll move on to section six, item 6A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim May 5th through 11th, 2024 as Drinking Water Week in Garden City, Kansas.
Mayor, I make the motion, we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
I'm gonna read that now. Yeah. You want, we're afraid. Want the mayor to read the proclamation now or is there any kind of a business?
Well, the mayor can do it.
Yeah. Go ahead.
All right. We'll go ahead and read the proclamation. So whereas water is our most valuable natural resource and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life, our citizens' joy, and whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a distribution crew maintaining the infrastructure of communities rely on to support high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps, and whereas the city of Garden City is also embarking on new projects to increase water reuse and provides programs to encourage water conservation, to preserve water needed for drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs, and whereas we are all stewards of our source of water and the infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend, and whereas the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore, I, Manny Ortiz, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim May 5th through 11th, 2024 as Drinking Water Week in the City of Garden City and encourage all citizens of Garden City to seek information about their water supply and its role in the community. Sign and seal this seventh day of May.
Are we good?
We're good.
Fred's good.
Item 6B. The governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim May 5th through 11th, 2024 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in Garden City, Kansas.
I make the motion, Mayor, that we move to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. I believe there's a picture for this one. We'll go ahead and read it. No special event, but we'll go ahead and read it and get a picture afterwards. So, okay. Whereas the office of the professional municipal court, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists through the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartially rendering equal service to all, and whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Manny Ortiz, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim May 5th through 11th, 2024 as the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Garden City and encourage all citizens to extend an appreciation to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Sign and seal this seventh day of May, 2024.
If you want to come down front, the commission can as well to take the picture with C. Lynn and Cory.
Yeah.
Give you a break at least on the next one?
Yes.
All right. Good. All right. Give you a break at least on the next one?
Yes.
All right. Good. Item 6C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim May 12th through the 18th, 2024 as National Police Week in Garden City.
Mayor, I move we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
And we will read this proclamation now, and I think there's some members from the police department that want to take their picture with the commission as well. Whereas there are approximately 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Garden City Police Department, and whereas 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately 19,000 injuries, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, over 25,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, and whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. And now therefore, I, Manny F. Ortiz, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim May 12th through 18th, 2024 as National Police Week and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. We further support law enforcement communities while honoring officers who made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Thank you for your dedication and commitment to keeping the public safe. Sign and seal this seventh day of May, 2024.
Item 6D. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a waiver to the Code of Ordinance Section 62-12 to allow for the discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City July 1st through 5th, 2024 from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Chief?
Dear heavenly mayor commissioners, the discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City has been a longstanding option for the citizens during the Fourth of July holiday. Currently, the sales fireworks of Finney County College K are 22-6-5 permanent days until January 27th through July 5th. In 2023, the city commissions issued a waiver, the City Code of Ordinance 62-12, allowing for discharge of fireworks within the city limits during the days of July 1st through July 5th, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Garden City Fire Department, in our two places, are in need of significant amount of time canvassing fireworks, stadiums, tents, and/or buildings. To get the information in the hands of consumers, we are in progress to be allowed to be discharged and authorized days and times. Additionally, DCFB and DCPD staff utilize social media campaigns notably as well as S-cams and other agents throughout the city to ensure proper rules and regulations of discharge of fireworks are understood and followed. In collaboration between DCFB and DCPD's conducted proactive patrol and allowing for communication with the public has resulted in positive feedback. The alternative for four-year, the governing body may approve a waiver, ordered 62-12 to allow for discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City, Kansas during the date range of July 1st to July 5th, 2024 from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Alternative two, the governing body may approve a waiver, ordered 62-12, allowing for discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City, Kansas from the beginning of June 27th through July 5th, 2024 from the hours 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Alternative three, the governing body may not approve a waiver, ordered 62-12, to allow for discharge of fireworks within the city limits of Garden City, Kansas from July 1st through 5th, 2024 from the hours 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. You were in front of the county commission yesterday, and what did, how, what was, what was their vote? Okay. But the sale, the sale when? By the July 27th through the... Or June 27th? June 27th, okay. June 27th through July 5th, yes. And I know last year we, we did July 1st through the 5th, which I think worked pretty well for our community. I think so, too. Yeah. From 11:00 in the morning till 11:00 in the evening, it seemed to work okay. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the waiver, ordinance 62-12, to allow the discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City during the date range of July 1st through July 5th, 2024 from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
And we will read this proclamation now, and I think there's some members from the police department that want to take their picture with the commission as well. Whereas there are approximately 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Garden City Police Department, and whereas 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately 19,000 injuries, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, over 25,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, and whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. And now therefore, I, Manny F. Ortiz, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim May 12th through 18th, 2024 as National Police Week and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. We further support law enforcement communities while honoring officers who made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Thank you for your dedication and commitment to keeping the public safe. Sign and seal this seventh day of May, 2024.
Casey, that was a good smile. That was a good smile.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve a waiver to the Code of Ordinance Section 62-12 to allow for the discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City July 1st through 5th, 2024 from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Chief?
Dear heavenly mayor commissioners, the discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City has been a longstanding option for the citizens during the Fourth of July holiday. Currently, the sales fireworks of Finney County College K are 22-6-5 permanent days until January 27th through July 5th. In 2023, the city commissions issued a waiver, the City Code of Ordinance 62-12, allowing for discharge of fireworks within the city limits during the days of July 1st through July 5th, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Garden City Fire Department, in our two places, are in need of significant amount of time canvassing fireworks, stadiums, tents, and/or buildings. To get the information in the hands of consumers, we are in progress to be allowed to be discharged and authorized days and times. Additionally, DCFB and DCPD staff utilize social media campaigns notably as well as S-cams and other agents throughout the city to ensure proper rules and regulations of discharge of fireworks are understood and followed. In collaboration between DCFB and DCPD's conducted proactive patrol and allowing for communication with the public has resulted in positive feedback. The alternative for four-year, the governing body may approve a waiver, ordered 62-12, to allow for discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City, Kansas during the date range of July 1st to July 5th, 2024 from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Alternative two, the governing body may approve a waiver, ordered 62-12, allowing for discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City, Kansas from the beginning of June 27th through July 5th, 2024 from the hours 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Alternative three, the governing body may not approve a waiver, ordered 62-12, to allow for discharge of fireworks within the city limits of Garden City, Kansas. Staff recommends, the governing body approve allowing for discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City, Kansas from July 1st through 5th, 2024 from the hours 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Have any questions?
You were in front of the county commission yesterday, and what did, how, what was, what was their vote?
The president was to ban fireworks in the county, a lot of the sales, to ban the discharge of fireworks in the county.
Okay. But the sale, the sale when?
By the July 27th through the...
Or June 27th?
June 27th.
Okay.
June 27th through July 5th, yes.
And I know last year we, we did July 1st through the 5th, which I think worked pretty well for our community.
I think so, too. Yeah. I think we extended it to 31 minutes, too, last year.
Yeah. From 11:00 in the morning till 11:00 in the evening, it seemed to work okay. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the waiver, ordinance 62-12, to allow the discharge of consumer fireworks within the city limits of Garden City during the date range of July 1st through July 5th, 2024 from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion?
No. I really appreciate the upfront work you do with all of the vendors, and I mean really helping people understand, and for the most part, our community has been really respectful about everyone else, keeping with those time limits. So I think you and your, and the police office have done a really great job of really helping people understand, so, and keeping everybody safe, so, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Under section seven, item 7A, I'd like to update the commission on the status of our ongoing negotiations with Finney County regarding services provided by Neighborhood and Development Services, a city office that contractually provides planning, zoning, inspection, enforcement services to both Finney County and to the city of Holcomb. The, yesterday in the county commission meeting, county administrator Reese was given direction to come visit with me, which he did, indicating that the county commission would like to have a team of county representatives meet with a team of city representatives to try to find common ground between what they've characterized as the city proposal that came out of joint negotiations between city and county people last year, and then the county proposal, which has been something that they more recently discussed at their meetings. So the, if the commission is interested in moving in that direction, the county commission has identified two members from their five-member elected body to sit in on those meetings, and then three, three staff people as well. I think they're asking for a similar, although I don't know that the commission couldn't have more than two people sit in on those discussions, but from a staff perspective, we'll assign the people that have been working, working most closely on the project over the last two years that we've been working on it, to those meetings. So that could be as few as three, but potentially as many as five for us to have all the touch points that we need in that conversation. So kind of a two-pronged approach. If, you know, if the commission could get some sort of consensus that you want to move in that direction, that's great. The mayor, ask the mayor to identify if, if you do want to move in that direction, who may serve in those negotiations. You guys can have that discussion, and then if you are agreeable, then I, in my visiting with Robert, I volunteered to send out a kind of a doodle poll of when we could get together, sort of a thing, probably targeting the earliest to get together being two weeks from this week, and then, you know, again, trying to juggle upwards of 10 or 12 people's schedules. That may push out a couple of weeks farther than that, but that's to give you kind of a sense of the timeline that maybe it would take. I think there is an interest both at the county level, certainly we've expressed this interest, too, at a local level, to try to get some idea of which direction we're heading as both entities are, you know, in the midst of budget considerations and those types of things right now. So I'll turn it over to you, Mayor. You can kind of take it from here.
Sure. Yeah. So I would like to at least continue with the request on finding a number of people to be head of that panel, so I think if we matched what their requests are, is they have the chair and the vice chair, if the mayor and the vice mayor would then be willing to go ahead and volunteer to be on that panel, we can probably get a list from the staff on who's going to be at that for them. Yeah, timeframe, probably in the next couple of weeks, 21st or 22nd. I know it's the last day of school, so we might just need to work around that, but I don't, other than that, I don't see a problem with getting together on their requests.
So will this be a coma meeting where it's going to be open to the public?
No. This will be, because there's two commissioners, it would not be a public meeting.
Okay, good.
It would be a kind of a, kind of similar to the meetings that we've having, but for they would be audited by a couple of people from both county commission and the city commission. There wouldn't be any binding action that anybody would be able to take. It would be simply, you know, in my mind, preparing something for both boards to consider down the road, but yeah.
And I think knowing that there's a timeframe to get this done, like Matt mentioned, as far as getting the budgets and stuff complete, this is a vital piece of information that we're going to need to help identify that, so.
Well, then based on your discussion, then bringing that back to the board early as, what do you consider?
I would suggest if everything goes well, it'll be pretty soon after that meeting, a couple of days, maybe just to kind of have council review.
Have an agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I would agree. I think for budgetary purposes, you know, we don't necessarily have to be dry on an agreement, but we'd have to, you know, in good faith, kind of know the direction that both groups were going to head, but in the, you know, in the, you know, I would say that the deadline for that is kind of in the, in July, I would think, from our budgeting standpoint, knowing what that looks like in July is, is pretty important. Now, could an agreement then be signed in August or September? Sure. But yeah, having, having a pretty clear direction of where we're headed, I would say we're inside of 60 days of needing to know that.
Because I know that there's been several meetings, and so if this is a one-and-done meeting, and then it's going to have the agreement, or if there's a potential for additional meetings, I mean, I think that's also, I mean, is that something on the table or is this a, well, just because I know this has carried on for two years.
Yeah, I think when we sat down two years ago, we were hoping it was a one-and-done meeting.
Right. So I'm curious about, is this, is this kind of the, is this kind of the culmination of everything, and then, you know, hopefully to walk away with an agreement? Is that our plan as a?
I want that.
Is that our plan? Yeah, I do, too. Well, I mean, they've got our, our agreement, and I know they've kind of marked something up, so I think if we come together as a group, look at theirs and look at ours, and try to merge them together during this meeting, and then come to consensus between at least the two, the two governing body commissioners or commission personnel that are there, because we're the ones that are going to vote on this to move it forward. So I think if we can kind of hammer that out, I mean, staff can kind of clean up the verbiage and everything, but I think if, you know, the, the chair and the vice chair and the mayor and the vice mayor kind of hammer it out and figure out kind of some common ground and say, this is kind of the direction we want to go, you know, here's, here's your proposal, here's ours, you know, how, how can we merge these together and move forward? And that's kind of what I'm looking for from this meeting so we can get this done, because it has been two years. Yep. And then that, that kind of, that kind of gets us moving forward, so we aren't in this kind of gray area all the time. Right. Okay.
So I'm, I'm on board with this, and...
Okay. As we have a consensus, that we'll go ahead and vice, or mayor and vice mayor.
Okay. Very good. All right. Item B is Public Works and Utilities Director Muirhead is here to provide an update on the installation of the pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Mary Street and B Street. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. Excuse me. As you remember, the governing body and then the Traffic Advisory Committee both approved the request of the pedestrian crossings installed at Mary Street and B Street for the safety of pedestrian crossing right there. That was done in 2024. The installation includes new solar-powered flashing yellow beacons, pedestrian crossing signage, painted crosswalks going across Mary Street. Actually, they're painting that today. Going across Mary Street, all the materials that were needed will be installed. They have received and paid for through the city's grant, community grant award to local health equity teams, as well as grant funding. The local health equity teams was awarded from the KU Medical Center. The installation of all this new equipment is scheduled to be completed by this Friday and then surfaced on Friday if everything goes well. Kind of weather-dependent, and then the, there's an older-style pedestrian crossing located at Mary and Casey's Drive that will be removed. That equipment will be put back into stock and used elsewhere else. The materials were paid through to a community grant, as well as the funding received from the KU Medical Center through the community's Promoting Health Equity Fund. So just an update on that, we're moving forward with what you guys requested.
That's good. Thank you.
Item 7C. We're pleased to announce that the city received notification of its annual grant award from the, from the Fennep Foundation Trust, and for 2024, the Fennep Foundation Trust is generally generously providing $130,000 for the improvements to city park systems. So part of that goes to the Parks Department, part of that goes to the Zoo Department, and then they've also allotted some funds to be used at our discretion. We're one of three endowed recipients of Fennep funds, and it's targeted at our park system, specifically the two Fennep parks. Fennep Park, which hosts Lee Richardson Zoo and, and the pool, and Clint Lightner Stadium, but also Fennep Scout Park along 8th Street. So their funds have allowed us to do quite a few outstanding improvements over the years. We appreciate their... We appreciate their assistance. Item seven D, staff's pleased to announce that the city has received the 2024 City Bot Premier Community Award. And so to tell us a little bit more about what that means, Derek?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The City of Garden City has received the 2024 City Bot Community Premier Award, which acknowledges remarkable accomplishments in local governance. City Bot, a leading provider of government technology solutions, conducted an extensive nationwide evaluation process, commenting on the City of Garden City's selection as a deserving recipient. Our city demonstrated exceptional commitment to community progress with a noble emphasis on promoting diversity through our diversity community strategy and our strategic plan for welcoming and integration. City Bot commended the City of Garden City for its visionary approach and transformative initiatives, which have significantly contributed to the enhancement of the local landscape. These efforts have distinguished Garden City from other candidates and reinforced its reputation as a leader in municipal governance. The runners-up for the award were Stafford County, Virginia, and Washington, DC.
No competition at all, so they made a wise decision.
Would be happy to answer any questions and take a photo with the governor.
Any questions?
No.
No? All right, come on down. The balance of the report of the city manager, our monthly or quarterly reports from different departments, do you have any questions over any of those reports?
I think they were all really well done. I really enjoyed the social media, the communications department report. I didn't realize you could collect so much information, but it really shows that we're becoming a leader as far as where people are getting the information in our community. So I just commend the communications, and I think that's really a, and also, I really appreciated that sales tax was up, so.
Yeah, it was a good sales tax report, for sure.
Yep. And it looks like the airport's on a record.
Oh, man.
To break a record again in employments this year. We keep on track, right? Good. And the terminal looks good, too, so.
All right, well, with that, we'll move on to meetings of note. The list is shrinking. If any of those require RSVPs, please let Ceylan or Corey know, and they'll take care of that. Ready for item nine? This is the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number 2562-2024A.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 2562-2024A.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution designating Sligo Station as a reinvestment housing incentive district within the city. If approved, this would be resolution number 3108-2024. John?
Good afternoon. The City of Kansas passed a statute that allows cities of a certain population within counties of a certain population to offer incentives for affordable housing. Garden City meets the qualifications required by the state and is able to establish such reinvestment housing incentive districts or RTRDs, pending the approval of the Secretary of Commerce. In order to obtain approval from the Secretary of Commerce, the city must first pass a resolution making certain findings and determinations as to the availability of housing within the city. Staff will then publish the resolution and send the required information to the Secretary of Commerce for approval. The resolution includes one potential RTRD property that was not considered in previous resolutions, and it will be known as Sligo Station. The area of the property is plus or minus 507 acres and is currently located at 1801 Palace Drive. Developer intends to build an apartment complex in the first phase of this development. The apartment complex will have 62 units with studio and one to two bedroom bedrooms. Development has received modern indoor housing American Rescue Act funds. The future phase of this development will include mixed uses and the developer intends to use a TIF and CID for the future project. There are two alternatives offered today. One, the governing body may approve the attached resolution, and two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends approval of the resolution. There is no official note at this time.
May I remove that we approved resolution number 3108-2024?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
John? Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Airport Improvement Project 3-20-0024-048-2024 bid, aircraft rescue and firefighting unit vehicle, and the aircraft rescue and firefighting equipment in the amount of $977,856. Rochelle?
Good afternoon. So in short, AIP 48 liposynthesis was to include a snow removal equipment. However, the manufacturers of airport snow removal equipment are having issues with the chassis and the production of the actual vehicles, so they withdrew their equipment and are going to put it on hold until they figure out some designing flaws, and then Rochelle should go back out to bid for the snow removal equipment next year, potentially when they're ready. Otherwise, AIP 48 is, as Matt said, a new arc truck, as well as arc equipment for that truck. Bits were opened on April 17th, and Rosenbar was a low bid that meets all the federal requirements for the truck, and Conrad Fire met all the requirements, plus a low bid for the auxiliary equipment. Upon the bid approval, staff will submit the application for the federal assistance, which is AIP 48, which will include the equipment costs, the vehicle costs, as well as the task order number six that was previously approved for engineering costs on behalf of HNTV for doing bids for this and specifications for the equipments. Your alternatives are to approve the bid, to deny the bid, provided guidance to staff. Staff recommends the approval of the bid. All this is federal AIP money, which is a 95.5 cost share, 95% of the federal funds for the project, and then 5% of the city share of that funds.
Fire Department okay with this equipment?
They were part of the process in the bid specs. With the federal equipment, it is very specific of what you have to do for park equipment, so there's very, there's really not that much that you can tweak on it or customize. So that was a little challenge with having customized fire trucks, but the federal government isn't allowed that. So Fire Department, it was very helpful in the process and the specifications of providing info on the equipment as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I move that we approve the Airport Improvement Project 3-20-0024-048-2024 bid for the aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle and the aircraft rescue and firefighting equipment in the amount of $977,856.
I second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
I do have a question about the snow removal, so will I have to come back as a separate?
Yeah, we'll do a separate AIP project on that, so more than likely, AIP 49, and we'll just include the snow removal equipment with the attachments.
And is it the same payback as far as the 95.5s?
Depends if we are in disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged city. So if it's not the 95.5% share, it'll be 910. So that could be the difference of the cost share.
Thank you.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider the Garden City Electric Department to be the electric service provider for the property annexed into the boundaries of the City of Garden City by ordinance number 2977-2024, North Jenny Barker Road right-of-way. Mike?
Yeah, thank you. Back on March 19th, 2024, the governing body annexed real property into the city's boundaries with that ordinance number 2977-2024. That was just the right-of-way of the Jenny Barker Road that was in. But anyway, in order to follow state statute, I want to read a portion of this just for the record, and then, so this property was annexed into the city, was within the certified territory of retail electric suppliers, specifically Wheaton Electric Cooperative, Incorporated. Pursuant to KSA 66-1, common 176, the city has an obligation to negotiate for the issues of a franchise agreement pursuant to KSA 12, 2001 with Wheaton Electric, since Wheaton is the retail electric supplier holding a certificate within that annex area. On April 22nd, 2024, Mr. Jim McVeigh, Assistant General Manager and General Counsel to Wheaton Electric, notified the city via an email to me, Mayor Muirhead, Director of Public Works and Utilities, that Wheaton would not be requesting a franchise agreement to serve the property annexed into the city by ordinance 2977-2024. Also pursuant to KSA 66-1, common 176, the city is obligated to pay Wheaton Electric for the expense of the retirement of Wheaton Electric facilities on the property and two times the previous 12 months' annual revenue. There are no existing electric services being served by Wheaton Electric on this property, therefore, the city is not required to compensate Wheaton Electric for anything, because there's nothing there, just a road right-of-way. KSA 66-1, common 176 requires the governing body to consider a minimum of 11 factors when making the selection of the electric service provider. These factors are limited to the following, and that's A through K. I'm not going to read all of that. In addition, the governing body may choose to ask additional information for consideration to make the selection of the electric service provider. And just in this case, we're just doing this to make sure we're following state statute, that we know electric service provided on the road there. So the alternatives would be that the governing body may choose to ask for additional information for consideration to make the selection of the electric service provider. Or alternative two, the governing body may further discuss the 11 factors and consider findings of fact and conclusions about selecting a retail electric supplier at a subsequent meeting. Staff recommends alternative two, that the governing body may further discuss the 11 factors and consider findings of facts and conclusions about selecting a retail electric supplier at a subsequent meeting. And thus, if you choose, then the city attorney will present that for consideration at that time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, I make a motion that we discuss the 11 factors and consider findings of fact and conclusions about selecting a retail electric supplier at a subsequent meeting.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Stone Creek Station sanitary sewer extension for $109,416. Fred?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Staff has identified four parcels along East Sherman Avenue that do not currently have access to the city sewer system. During the construction of the Sports of the World project, staff identified a connection point that would allow sewer extension to serve these parcels by connecting to the sewer improvements included in the Sports of the World infrastructure. SMH Consultants designed an extension, and the city received a permit from KDHE to install the infrastructure. Staff has worked with the general contractor for the Sports of the World, Dick Construction, and have obtained a bid from their infrastructure contractor. I believe Lee Construction will actually do the work to install 840 lineal feet of eight-inch sewer main. The work details to be completed are attached with this agenda item, and the project will allow the installation of sanitary sewer improvements to serve this area before the full buildup of the Sports of the World facility and accompanying buildings. The alternatives for the governing body would be, you may approve the bid to construct sewer extension for $109,416, or the governing body may decline to approve the bid to construct sewer extension, or you may direct us to provide some alternative direction. Also attached with the agenda item is the map showing the area that's impacted. There along Sherman, there's four parcels there that are not currently connected to the city sewer system.
Fred, on the sewer extension, I appreciate that they identified those properties. Now, do those have to, do those owners have to tie in at this point, or is that something that they would request later if they ever wanted to?
It allows for them to request later. If they're currently using a septic system, County Environmental Code, county would be involved in that septic approval process, and if their sanitary sewer within, basically within arm's reach, then you're required to connect to the sanitary sewer system instead of continuing to use septic. So from an environmental standpoint, it's a good thing, because it reduces another potential area that could create an issue with the water.
Yeah, I thought the bid was very reasonable, especially since you were right there, and that they're willing to do that. So with that, I want to offer a motion, Mayor, to approve the bid from Lee Construction to construct the sewer extension for $109,416.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Western Kansas Career Showcases for a sponsorship of $50,000 from the City of Garden City. Derek?
Western Kansas Career Showcases aims to establish a platform for career engagement among students, parents, school districts, businesses, and industries across Western Kansas. This initiative is geared toward supporting students and remaining within our local communities. Through the showcase program, their endeavor is to cultivate a grow-your-own approach to bolster our community and local workforce. Since 2023 and continuing into 2024, seven showcases have been conducted, attracting over 1,000 students from more than 30 distinct school districts. According to Western Kansas Career Showcases, the primary objective of these showcases is to foster relationships with education institutions, students, businesses, and the community at large. Additionally, the program's aim is to enhance rural workforce retention and foster leadership development within our region. Western Kansas Career Showcases is seeking the City of Garden City's support to match Fannie County's $50,000 sponsorship as key sponsors. Looking ahead, there are currently eight showcases scheduled to outside those stages for the 2024, 2025 period, underscoring their commitment to expanding and sustaining their initiatives. There are three alternatives for the governing body to choose from. Alternative number one, the governing body may approve the sponsorship request for $50,000 to Western Kansas Career Showcases. Number two, the governing body may deny the sponsorship request. And number three, the governing body may give staff the direction. Staff has no recommendation, and the fiscal note on this is the map will be split up and cleared out of the departments advertising, the departments that take place in the showcase.
I watched the county commission, Mayor, then they did, he hit the, I can't remember the guy's name, who leads it, did come and give them a presentation. And, you know, I'd appreciate that same, I mean, we have a different audience, I think. I'd love the presentation, too. I thought it was really well done. It got really excited, because, I mean, spending $50,000, I mean, and not really having the information to know where it goes. I mean, I'm not opposed to this. I think it's a really great opportunity, but I would really like to have a presentation so that people know, hey, this is, these are dollars well spent. I think he did a really good job when he presented at the county, and I'd love to see him present here. If we want to vote the money, that's fine with me. However, I think a presentation would be something to be really valuable for our listeners.
I would probably also advise the commission, the sum totals of all your marketing budgets and all your departments, it doesn't equal 50,000. So it's misleading to say that that's where we pay for, we may pay for those line orders, but they would definitely be overruns. I think when we initially got the request from one of the, one of the- I think when we initially got the request from one of the, one of the organizers of the, of the event, maybe we were expecting that it was a little bit more along the lines of, you know, like when you sponsor a.
What proportion?
Yeah, like a, you know, a fundraising golf tournament or something like that. And so at the 50,000 level, Fannie County was, of course, property owners in the city of Garden City are paying towards that. And so we asked a little bit of follow-up question about, you know, kind of where, where do the revenue streams of the sponsorships, what's the, what's the business plan of this endeavor look like? There were like eight or nine, I think, showcases that happened throughout southwest Kansas. Maybe a few, seven, I guess, is what the memo says. About $5,000 is what it costs to put on each one. That in and of itself, five times seven is 35,000. We know Fannie County's in for 50,000, City of Garden City being in for 50,000. So I don't know that we have a crystal clear understanding of what the, what the sponsorship money is covering.
How many, how many of this?
It does speak to a specific goal that the city commission has spoke to in your goal-setting session, which is sort of that workforce development. But yeah, I don't, I don't know that, there's some questions here that we can't fully answer.
Yeah, because I didn't know the locations, or and I was wondering how many were held here locally, and I mean, how many students from our, our area impacted? I mean, it makes more sense to spend dollars on, especially if it's getting our students there. I didn't even know how the whole program works, and that's why I really appreciate a presentation and be able to ask those questions, so.
Yeah, and I agree. I think having, I mean, there's still some questions that we would like to ask, and having a presenter here to kind of, you know, pass those questions on to, I think would be helpful and certainly gauge our intent of what a dollar amount would look like. So I think if we can have a general consensus on what we want to do moving forward for, I think we can do that.
So in summary, to have a presenter, and then for him, for us to bounce questions off of him to see what is a more reasonable amount for us.
Right.
Yes.
Well, or just asking, I mean, exactly what the $50,000 is going for.
Yeah.
And kind of what the showcases look like. I mean, I like the memo, but there's a lot of questions.
Right.
I mean, that's a lot of money for a sponsorship and seven showcases. I would like to, I mean, there's a lot more that I would like to know before I, I vote on this.
Does that give you the consensus?
Give this a consensus of press, would you?
I agree.
Commissioner Landry, I'm sorry.
I agree with the other commissioners, that I'd like to see what exactly this $50,000 would be going to. I think having a presentation would help with those questions, so.
All right. Now, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12E is our budget discussion for this meeting. We'll review debt service, special revenue, and internal service funds.
Get the thick book out, right?
This is the easiest of the three.
You say that about everyone, so I'm not, I don't know.
I don't know if I'll say that the other ones.
Probably not, yeah.
So I'll point to your direction, a couple changes from the formatting that you've seen in previous years. The reports being provided are coming out of our new financial software, and so they don't carry the cash balance, starting cash balance for the year, the ending cash balance at the end of next year, like we used to do when we had the spreadsheets that we would create. And so the front page or the colorful page that's attached with the documentation today shows kind of the cash flow summary of all of the funds that we're reviewing. So the starting 23, or the ending 23 balance, then you have the 24 revenues and expenditures, the 24 ending balance, the 25 revenues and expenditures, and then the 25 ending balance. So rather than have that picture on each individual organization or department or budget presented, it's kind of on a one-sheeter for you to see. As we do the other presentations throughout the rest of this cycle, we'll have the same sheet that shows the departments or the budgets that we're presenting and what those cash balances look like. And at the end, we'll continue to provide this as kind of a summary as we make adjustments and changes. That way you can see that cash flow picture. The other thing I'll point out is that in the past, all of our breakouts have had positive values, and we've had a revenue section and an expense section. With these new reports, the revenues are reflected as a negative value or a credit in the system, and expenses are a positive. So as we go through this, I'll kind of point out, point that out to you, but it looks a little odd compared to what you've grown accustomed to seeing. As I go, I'll hit the high notes, I'll hit the things that are kind of outliers, things that are adjustments from normal, with these being our special revenue funds. These typically have a designated revenue source or an allocated revenue source that's for a specific purpose or project or function. And so a lot of these are very consistent year over year, so I won't spend a ton of time going into the details on each one unless you specifically have a question or anything else you want me to ask or speak to. Starting off, we have, the fund 201 is our debt service, our bond and interest fund. This you'll see at the top, the ad valorem taxes, the different taxes are all negative values. Those are, like I said, representing the revenues coming into this fund. And then you have our expenses being our interest on our bonds and our principal on our bonds. This fund covers the debt service on the general obligation bonds that are for our general purposes, so parks and recreation, streets, any project that's outside of the utilities. Historically, this, we budget an amount, a coverage amount of 5% for the coming year. So if you see that 2025 column, $170,000 budgeted as that 5% coverage is to allow some buffer, some wiggle room in case something comes up. Historically, we budget that this fund primarily takes care of that debt service for the coming year, and that's about all it carries forward. I will point out too that the assumption here is that we are not issuing a bond in 2024 for general purposes, and so that debt service is what's on the books right now as coming in the future years. If there was a decision made by the commission to issue a bond in 2024, then the cost for the interest and payment and the principal payment next year would likely go up, accounting for that new bond issuance, we'd have to adjust for that. Next is our 202 fund, which is our TIF fund. This is where we track all the money that comes in from either the county for RHIDs and TIFs, from the increment amount collected on increased property values, or the CID percentage of the sales tax that's collected for different development projects. Most of the time, we collect that money, we hold this somewhat of as an escrow fund, and we pass it on to the developers, once they've submitted the adequate documentation to provide validation for the expenses they've experienced. So most of this is a money in and a money out for us. You'll see the values continue to increase on a lot of these properties that have been on the books for a while. As those property values continue to rise, the amount that comes in and out through us continues to increase as well. There are some new ones. You'll notice the Hawkeye Development at the bottom, Lost River, these are newer projects that have been completed or at least on the way. Then we have our new TIF districts for campus crossing and Western Kansas Corridor that we anticipate to see funds coming in this year, as well as a couple new CID's for GC Plaza 2, and the GC CID for the Western, or the campus crossing as well. So those will be amounts that we start to see come in and out this year. And then there is an element here where the city issued bonds to cover our debt service for the infrastructure out at Shulman Crossing. And just like in past years, the collections that we're receiving from that increment have covered that debt service cost as well as outpaced it. And so we have, I want to say, last time I looked, there's about a million and a half in excess revenues there, which will allow us to pay the debt service off a few years early, or on track to pay it off a few years early, which is a good thing. Questions on TIF at all, or any of that fund? Fund 301 is our community trust reserve. This operates somewhat as our piggy bank for projects, more or less. And so historically, the last time we used this was for a project, was our Farmland Road project, where the cost or expense out appeared, and then they reimbursed when K dollars came in, as well as portions from the county. The project right now that will be utilizing the community trust reserve funds to do is our Safe Streets For All analysis, and so that's ongoing. We've started to experience costs for that, and then we will receive reimbursement from the grant for the Safe Streets For All that'll reimburse this fund. Right now, our balance typically carries around 2.5 million. Historically, it's been around 2 million. One of the elements we look at when we evaluate whether we are under financial emergency or not is that this fund has that balance. And so right now, we're sitting where we, where we plan to be and are comfortable. Fund 302 is the capital and primary reserve. Historically, this carries balances from departments that have transferred dollars in for either an unfinished project or an equipment piece that wasn't able to be acquired in the given year. So we transfer and hold these funds over to be able to finish that purpose in the following year. So you see a lot of the balances, the balance of this fund will be, is planned to be spent down in 2024, due to the nature of that we anticipate any project will finish up or those equipment will arrive. In reality, that typically ends up taking a little longer than 12 months sometimes, and so that balance may, may carry forward into the future year as well. But really mostly just kind of a holdover fund for general fund projects and such that didn't finish.
Has this been a lot easier to track then, those holdovers?
Yeah, the benefit to doing so is that then we don't have to rebudget for those in the future year, the next year, to then adjust the budget figures and make sure we account for all those things, when we're talking about our mill levy and accounting for it. We experience the cost, and even if we force ourselves to experience that cost in the given year that we planned it and put it aside, then for all things budgeting, it reflects that that cost did happen, and we can move forward knowing that it's going to come and not have to do that adjustment. So it helps to keep the budget view clean, that we look kind of at a year at a time and don't have to keep pulling in these old stuff from the past years. Any other questions on that one? The next fund is our special trafficway fund. You'll see the first portion is the revenues that come, and these come from the state highway funds, as well as our federal exchange amounts that KDOT offers us. So typically, it's usually about $1.1 million in revenues for this fund. We do have a reimbursement here. This fund is what was paying the engineering and study costs for the drainage ditch one and two, the pedestrian pathway, and the Kansas Avenue C clip project that's ongoing, as we started them before the geo-bond was completed. And so there's a payback to this fund to reimburse those costs from those geo-bond dollars. And so that's that 270,000 that you see as that transfer other coming in in 2024. This covers the costs of the next few pages, cover the cost for the traffic operations. Historically, it's the equipment that is needed for streets. They have some set aside for their signalization, repair needs, traffic signals, signs, and such, as well as their snow operations. You'll see that there's an uptick on what says page 70, the 5656 code for material street repair, we've increased the amount that we're putting forth to start to bite off the PEC analysis that was provided to you guys as a pre-meeting for the street condition projects that we'll need to do. This fund has a set limited amount of income, so we can't just tackle it all here, but we have uptick to the amount that we'll proportion towards those street projects, starting in 2025. And then I'll point out that on the, kind of top of page 71, the 6523 new equipment in this year, there is a tractor in that, there's the hook lift trailer, there's dump truck leases for the two new dump trucks that was approved recently, as well as a boom mower attachment. And then next year, they're looking at that dump truck lease continuing, an excavator lease continuing, as well as a street sweeper would be the large ticket item on there. Our current street sweeper is just not quite doing what it's supposed to do, and so we're looking to replace that next year. Questions on special trafficway? Moving on, fund 304, start on page 74, is special improvements. This is the fund that operates our mower costs, so anytime a property is unkempt and must be mowed by our contracted mowers, they will go out and provide that service, then we will assess those costs to the property owner, either through them paying it back to us, or if it's unpaid when we send them the notice, that it goes to the county. And so this is kind of a revolving fund as well for those costs as they go in and out. Fund 305 is a cemetery endowment. A portion of each cemetery space that is purchased through the cemetery gets put into the cemetery endowment fund to build up funds for capital projects and other such things. Right now, we were building up for the past few years, planning on that cemetery expansion project, with it covering, being covered by the geo-bond issuance last year. We're looking at saving up some dollars here and looking to see what we can do with the singing tower in the future, is kind of the project earmarked for what these funds would potentially go towards down the road. Still needing to do a little bit more analysis on that, as well as figure out what that cost actually looks like before we can pull the trigger. Fund 306 is a special recreation and parks. I'll point out that the alcohol tax that we get each quarter from the state, a third of it goes to the general fund, a third of it goes to the special parks and recreation fund, and a third of it goes to the AFAC funding, which is our next fund. And so these dollars coming in for the special parks and recreation are just the revenue from the, that AFAC funding. Historically, this fund helps fund the golf course, this helps fund park projects or initiatives that we're doing with recreation. For this calendar year, we're looking to put some of these dollars towards Rotary Park restroom, which is the 65,000 under that new equipment parks. We're also, last year we purchased, I'll remind you, we purchased all the little robot mowers at the golf course, which I heard they're going to put horns on and make little bison out of, so little buffaloes run around. So they purchased quite a bit of those robot mowers last year, and that experiment has gone really well. This year, they're looking to purchase a light fairway unit out of these funds to help offset the cost of the golf course. And then there's that $25,000 lease agreement golf at the bottom. I'll remind you, that's a repayment of the purchase that the Recreation Reserve made for the golf carts out of the golf course, and that'll be finished paid back on 2026. So you'll see that for a few more years here. And then next year, there's a $40,000 new equipment here, is looking to purchase a verti-cut mower that both parks and recreation and golf will all be able to use. So yeah, historically, this kind of gets split between the division, parks and recreation, and they work together to figure out where best we can use those funds. At times, we save it up for a few years to purchase a larger capital equipment or a park project. Fund 307 is the special alcohol and drug abuse. This is our AFAC funding. You had a distribution last year outside of our normal distributions, and that's where you'll look back at the 23 actuals, at 231,000 spent last year, incorporated that extra amount going to community daycare. There's also an earmarked chunk of this going towards, this Genesis Health, is that right? Or Compass? Yeah, one of the two, for a joint task, or a joint response project or purpose. The historic trend here is that we receive in the alcohol funds, and we've dispersed less than what we've collected, and so that fund is built up, and so that's what allowed that kind of extra dispersment last year. This year, we're on pace to disperse the normal amount based on the applications that we've received thus far this year. Fund 308 is the FINP Trust, which received the award for this year, this meeting and presented on. These dollars are specifically tied towards FINP Scout Park, FINP Park, the zoo, or the FINP Center. And so those departments have a very robust tracking, where they track that the request dollars are what we were using those dollars for in the projects. But this is split across those three entities to be able to track that we can account to the FINP fund, or the FINP Trust, that we're using those dollars for what we said we would use them for. 309 is risk management. This is what we use for small claims outside of our insurance policies that the city will settle, or any other such similar deductible type costs. Historically, we have a few departments that transfer funds into this, and then if we ever receive reimbursements from insurance, kind of years after the fact, or anything else in that realm, but not really tied to a fund or department, it'll go into here to help keep this robust enough that it covers those as they come up. Historically, we've been building this fund up over the last few years and been able to cover all of those expenses that we've experienced. Fund 310 and 311 are similar in nature. 310 is drug enforcement. These are, we get state tax distributions for drug taxes that we can use towards specific drug type costs. We've chosen to use those on our K-9 costs for the police department, and so you'll see that there's the training for the K-9, goes towards us sending an officer to K-9 training, or training of the officer and the K-9 as they're in service, as they go back and recertify. And we also purchase supplies for the K-9 and equipment that's specifically related to the K-9 or other drug tasks, drug enforcement equipment. So these funds typically are used for those functions. We've chosen K-9 as kind of our, our lane that we stay in. There's also funds that come in here from drug forfeiture that we collect on, as evidence, we then send it off to the state. So you'll see that drug forfeiture line and that forfeit expense is money that we collect, book in, and then send on to the state for them to hold and distribute. Fund 311 is similar in nature in the sense that it's from DEA forfeiture. This used to be something we would see more activity on in the past, but there haven't, has not really been any DEA forfeiture dollars coming to the city in the past few years. There's a very small balance in this fund. Historically, we've been able to use that for similar type projects and drug enforcement type equipment, since, but since the dollars aren't really coming in, there's not much of a budget here anticipated in the future. 312 is our community development loan. We've used this for our housing rehabilitation loan programs throughout the city, so those individuals that want to replace their windows, or sidewalks, or some of the other functions that the city has programs in place where they can receive quotes or bids from different providers, or contractors, and then the city will pay the cost of that, and the homeowner then pays it back as a loan program. This hasn't really been utilized much in the last few years, and so you'll see in 23, there was no usage of this fund, but there is some dollars, about $20,000 set aside for this programming in case there were citizens that were desirous to use it.
And those funds are paid back at zero interest, is that correct?
I believe that's correct. It's either very, very low interest or zero, but I can't remember 100%. I can follow up. I can follow up. Next is our emergency shelter grant. Over the last few years, kind of since COVID, there was a program through Kansas Housing Resource Corporation that the city was administering to help with housing needs in our community. I believe family crisis and Catholic charities, maybe a May's House, were the recipients, and we were kind of the middleman of the grant. Moving forward, they have approval to go directly to the agencies and the KHRC will work with them, and so we've kind of been cut out there, which is fine with the city. But the last transaction here is there was a percentage piece of administrative coverage that the city would get to keep as administering the grant, and that just needs to be transferred to our general fund, and then this fund will close out. And so that's that 2750 you see in 24 is just wrapping up of this project. Fund 314, economic development loan. These are our CDBG dollars. Back in COVID, during COVID, we were authorized to disperse out loans to small businesses using the CDBG funds, and so there was a lot of activity on this fund for the last few years. Most of those have been paid off and collected, and so you've seen that diminish. The ones that are budgeted are just those outliers that are left. We had stroke cleaners in agreement, I think, last meeting, so that will hopefully be resolved this year or next year. VHC Performance and Repair is one that's still outstanding, and then BURDA's, we anticipate will be finished paying off by the end of this year, but those are the only three that are still outstanding from these loans at this time.
So will you hold this account open or will this account close?
So this fund will stay, they're federal dollars that we're entrusted with, but we can't really spend them unless authorized through instances like COVID where they say, hey, it's time you can use these for authorized loans. There is some other programming that in the past we've been able to utilize these funds for, but they aren't technically the city's dollars. So they kind of sit and wait until such opportunities as we're authorized to use them. And we utilize Great Plains Development to handle the kind of the planning and distribution of these funds and the tracking, and they're at a Dodge City, but they provide their annual report and their semi annual report every six months to the commission, and so you see that report coming in of where we're at on these funds. Next, 315 is enhanced wireless 911. These are telephone franchise fee pieces that come in specifically to cover dispatch costs. And so there are a couple categories that they can utilize them for, which is their software and maintenance and upkeep of such, their repair and purchasing of new equipment related to dispatch, and then the training and travel associated with that for dispatchers. And so we historically have received funds in in excess of what we've utilized specifically for dispatch, and there was a bit of a buildup of this fund over the years. There's the Coordinating Council that authorizes expenditures for these dollars, and we received approval to use a chunk of that fund buildup for the mobile command unit that was purchased because it has a dispatch unit inside and is going to offer us redundancy of our dispatch services. If something ever happened to our law enforcement center, we would have the mobile command unit as a backup. And so the $250,000 in 2024 is allocated towards that mobile command cost. And then there's been a couple other capital expenditures last year and plan for next year that are using some of that excess that's been in the fund. But then we'll go back to a norm where the 220 to 240,000 revenue is spent on that kind of programming, ongoing regular cost associated with dispatch. Questions on that one? Next is 317, which is HIDA, and I'm going to pause and allow Chief to come up. I did have some questions about the HIDA grant as well as the PSN grant, and I asked Chief he can speak to the purpose and kind of functions of these far better than I can. So he'll speak to the kind of the what they're for, where the money comes from, and then I'll cover the budget.
Good afternoon. How about just kind of give a brief synopsis of each one of them, the HIDA, the PSN grant, answer any question you have. If you want to get more granular, if you have the questions that are more granular, I mean, more on how to get sent an email that provides that increased detail. HIDA stands for High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, and it's a federal grant program that focuses resources on critical drug and trafficking regions. Currently, there's 33 of them in the United States or in one of those. This grant program gives resources and the money to both the sheriff's office and the police department that funds our drug investigations. And it's managed by the fiduciary of it is the federal cell, they cannot leave quarterly checks with us if we have meetings, and it's pretty, pretty intense every year of what money can be spent on, how it's being spent. So just like that, the PSN stands for Project Safe Neighborhood. It's also a grant program, and it was awarded to Wichita Police Department, or the State Police Department, and Wichita State University acting as the research department on that grant. And it focuses on gang enforcement, gang crimes, and reducing violent crimes in neighborhoods. GCP uses this, the Project Safe Neighborhood, to specialize in equipment training over time if necessary for regular operations. And again, we meet quarterly with our federal partners and fiduciaries on that, and it's a three-year grant cycle on this one. So every year, the grant extends for three years, and we have to do an approval process for each year that we get the grant, and what we're going to focus on each year. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you guys could have, and if I can't, I'll absolutely provide that detail.
So it is the same funding every year then, or is it?
Project Safe Neighborhood is a kind of moving target a little bit. HIDA is typically the same amount each year.
So I'm sorry, Chief, you said that they give you a list of what you can spend it on, or is that based on the discussion you have with the with the government oversight people?
So it's, we submit projects and they go through this approval process.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
So I'll point out on HIDA, the approved process that we use and approved expenditures is to cover the costs of a very specific officer that's focused on drug task force operations. And so you'll see that there's a salary line, a lot of the breakout here is salaries. The city transfers in from the police department budget that grant city share amount, and then a portion of that federal grant from the HIDA is covering the costs of paying this salary and benefits of this employee to focus on drug task force operations. And so that amount from the HIDA has stayed fairly consistent. One intricate part of budgeting for this is that the timing of reimbursements from these might fluctuate. Each grant or each grant cycle is open across multiple calendar years for us because it's operating off the federal time, the federal fiscal year, and so they typically run July to June. And a lot of the time, we'll end up expensing from multiple grant cycles in one calendar year that are going to have reimbursements from multiple grant pots of money. And so the the number fluctuates, it doesn't seem as consistent, but that award amount has been consistent across the years. It's more just a timing issue. But this year, where most of that grant dollars are allocated towards that, the salary benefits of the officer in the task force, as well as there's new equipment, this year, they purchased a license plate reader that's able to scan, I believe, and register those license plates as they go by, and that's helpful equipment that was approved through the grant. In the future, most, in the history and the future, most of the time, it's specifically the salaries with some small equipment. This was a larger equipment purchase that was authorized to use those dollars as well. Fund 318 is housing. This is a fund that's been building up over the years from the housing authority. Instead of them paying property taxes to the county, they, we had a deal that they will pay a payment in lieu of taxes or a pilot, and that comes to the city, and we've been holding it in this fund to build up a kind of a reserve for the housing authority for potential capital expenditures down the road that wouldn't be covered on their normal operating budget. There, the anticipation a few years back was that they would redo their parking lot, and this would probably be helpful in part of that, but they were able to acquire funding with COVID and everything else, they got a little extra, I believe, is what happened. And so this has yet to have been utilized, but we're going to continue to build that up for those as they come. Project development. This is a fund that has been used for different capital projects or development projects in the past. Right now, it's holding the downtown development dollars that the commission allocated last year, so there's 200,000 that was set aside for specifically that downtown development fund. And as those applications are reviewed and approved by the commission and draw down that amount, we'll see that expenditure come out of this fund, and then we're working with the neighboring development department to make sure that we track those and that we don't overexpend the the amount that was set aside for this fund. And then there's also some funding left in here for development incentives for different development projects. Fund 320 is the Project Safe Neighborhood that Chief talked about. This one doesn't have a salary element to it. This is more so covering new equipment or training, so there's costs. This year, there was a searchy training that was conducted, and then there's software for Nighthawk for that license plate reader that is coming out of this to help with that equipment as well. And so this one's been more equipment specific than salary and position. And then Fund 321 is the opioid settlements. These are dollars that we're receiving from the class action lawsuits against opioid distributors that has been going on for the last few years. The state of Kansas receives these funds through the Attorney General's Office, and then they disperse them out to the local entities. And then there's a very strict list of what can, these funds can be used for, and so we're working with the police department to derive what our plan of attack will be to use these funds for drug enforcement or drug prevention programs, specifically combating the opioid crisis in the country. That concludes the special revenue funds. As we switch to our internal service funds, this covers our health insurance and work comp, operate similar to a special revenue, but the funds come from the city set aside for a direct purpose. In our health insurance fund, you'll see that the revenues come in from either the transfers from city departments. As we go through payroll, the city piece of the amount set aside for each employee is transferred in this fund, and at the end of the year, any balance remaining that was budgeted gets brought in. And then the employee contributions are withheld from those employee paychecks each summary and brought into this to cover the health insurance costs for those premiums. And then the retirees, any retiree on the plan, they write a check and cover the whole amount for their health insurance each month. So those are the three revenue sources for this fund. And then the expenses, there's a few incentive programs we have for the spousal incentive for those that participate in the health risk assessments, gym membership incentive for employees that are participating and active in a gym membership. And then we have our employee assistance program out of this fund, as well as some of our administrative costs for our life insurance policies for all staff through, I believe, the standard now. But the main costs here that you'll see is the health insurance premiums, budgeted at 4.5 million dollars in '24, as well as the 804,000 for the clinic operations. Those are the two large pieces that are funded from this this fund. The way we look at what the costs need to be for the city and the employees, that we take all those costs we anticipate, and then we break them into the proportion amount based off how many employees are in each category of deduction on health insurance. We look at what that cost then would likely be in the future, and then we say, how much can the city put towards, how much of the city's contribution will cover, and then the rest is on the employees. The last few years, those health insurance costs have continued to rise at a pretty high rate, and so the city has increased the amount per employee that's been set aside for the health insurance benefit, and the employee's percentage of the total share of costs has been shifted to where they're taking more of that burden on as well to help cover these costs. And we anticipate for the next few years, we'll continue to see that that trend where there will shift more of the percentage of the employee, but the employer will also increase the amount per month per employee that they're contributing.
So Jared, on the clinic operation, so is this an amount set on the number of employees or how's that how's that figure derived?
So right now, our clinic agreement is based on a number of kind of time slots of staff operation at the clinic. It's not necessarily a number of appointments or a number that we hit a threshold and they say, okay, sorry, city seats are all full no longer. We really pay for an amount of block of service, but the clinic has worked very flexibly with us to really kind of fit us in and take our staff in regardless of how much of that we are actually allocating and taking. So it's more of a theory based cost than an actuality that they're keeping track to say, this is how many slots you took. The mental wellness component is more kind of slot based. We're paying a set amount for a base amount of time slots a month, and then they've been charging extra if we exceed that. There's a proposal that we'll bring forth at either next meeting or the one after for renewal of that mental wellness, and we're going to cap the amount of visits to say, hey, rather than kind of have that variable, we're going to set that this is our our limit is how the proposal is presented. But that's a cost that was covered through the, some of the CARES Act COVID money we had, and then partially from the health insurance fund last year, but that full cost is now hitting the health insurance fund. So that's an uptick in the clinic costs over what was historically there because we have that mental wellness.
So this figure includes both the mental, the mental wellness and also the clinic visits?
Correct, yep. And historically, before, I think it was last year, we consolidated, we owned or we paid the lease on the location, we paid some of the infrastructure costs, the phone. GrowWell took that all on, and we incorporated into that base rate, so we pay that monthly base rate that kind of grabs all that, instead of us being the caretaker of those services as well. The health insurance reserve, you'll see that the only cost is transfer out to cover, help cover some of the increased costs of the health insurance fund. This is kind of helping us slow the bleed on that increased rate we've been seeing over the last few years. And health insurance reserve is something that we held on to in the past when we were self insured, because if we had very large claims, we would have to cover some of that excess cost. With us being fully insured, we don't experience the pain of those at the moment, they just get incorporated to the premium costs in the following year and our cost increases. And so we've been kind of dwindling down this health insurance reserve from the balance it was at to help make, kind of ease the pain as we adjust the employee piece and the employer piece on the health insurance costs. Workers' compensation fund, we transfer money in, set amount for each employee, full-time employee in the city to cover our health or our work comp premiums. This is through CAMIT, or Kansas Municipal Insurance Trust. Our costs the last couple years have gone up. Last year was higher than we anticipated, this year was up a little bit over last year. So we've increased the amount allocated per employee. They do a review in April or May, and they they charge, and we bill us in January, February, based off of a census of what they anticipate our costs will be. They reevaluate in April and May, and then they, after they have our true costs, we either get a reimbursement back or they, we adjust up and we pay the extra amount. The last two years, it's been a payment up as they've analyzed that that true cost. Historically, we've gotten reimbursements most of the years, and that goes into the work comp reserve to help build the fund, similar to how health insurance once upon a time was self insured, we had to have that robust amount. Work comp, we used to have to eat the kind of excess, large level claims with us being insured through CAMIT, we don't experience those anymore, we're fully insured through them. And so we're transferring in 75,000 from the work comp reserve to help kind of build up this as we've experienced those higher than normal costs. And our hope would be after, if we have a few years of good work comp history, that cost will go back down and we can experience kind of a diminishing of what we're experiencing right now. And then our work comp reserve, you just see some wrapping up, the last of our outstanding claims from before we were fully insured have been resolved this year, and so we have some costs for those that are budgeted in to kind of wrap up those claims. And then we have our transfer into the general work comp fund. Other than that, our costs out of this fund going forward are pretty minimal. We anticipate it'll mostly build up and be that kind of backup for the work comp fund. That concludes everything I have to present today. I'd be happy to answer any questions. As I said, these are more routine, kind of more continuous in the function of these funds. The next two meetings, the next meeting will cover enterprise funds. There's definitely more variables and more discussion or things to kind of engage with on those, and then the general fund after that in the same capacity. But I'd be happy to answer, I don't want to diminish, that statement doesn't diminish, if you have questions, I'd love to answer them today to make sure you understand what these funds are for and what's happening with them.
Jared, one thing I kind of, I don't know if I missed it, one of the accounts that I was kind of wanting to know about is the one that we had, it would have been Burlington Coal Factory, was that a loan, a loan that we gave them and were in the, in the budget as that allocated?
The development incentive there?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking about? So that is housed, we've generally budget in the general fund an amount for development incentives, and then in that Fund 302, the capital improvement reserve, I can point out to you. Under development incentives, the very top of page 68, there's 200,000 is the budget right now, that's a holdover amount for dispersing those when they come in. We had funds in here before, that 200,000 in 2023 was the loan piece, and then as they get their certificate, I believe the other element is that once they have that certificate of occupancy and they have accomplished it, then these other 200,000 that's held will be able to be distributed as that incentive. And so this capital reserve is where we held those funds from the general fund, is where they initiated from, and we're held here to be able to accomplish that function.
Okay. I was just having, I was kind of trying to find it when I picked it up, but it's kind of hard to identify it with a, with a small space.
It's off a little bit. Yeah, and that's, that's one element. It produces really nice in the PDF, but it does cut off the descriptions here, and so I'll try to work on, is there a happy medium we can figure out? Because if I export it to a spreadsheet, it changes the formatting quite a bit, and it's quite a bit harder to produce in a clean way. And so what I could do is produce a list of all of the different codes with their full description, so then you have kind of a cheat sheet to look back to if there's ever one that's cut off. That might be a workaround a little bit, kind of an index for you.
Sure.
But yeah, the capital primer reserve is kind of a catchall for kind of the other, and so that's where the dollars are held for that.
I appreciate it. The index sheet on the front, but following was, I mean, at this pace... it was hard. But I would also, just to note, you know, that Fund 307, I'd really appreciate hearing how that joint task force is going or that joint agreement is going. That's the one with the alcohol, where we're doing, I can't remember, I remember it was funded-
The joint response?
Joint response, yeah.
We are holding, the money's earmarked because it hasn't happened yet, we held it aside to be able to use towards the project, but I believe we're still working on kind of the logistics of how that could work. So the dollars are there to make it happen.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was in operations. Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jared. Item 12F is an executive session, we don't anticipate any action after that executive session. So if the commission would like, we could skip that for now and finish up the meeting with the executive session. That would bring us to item 13, the consent agenda. If the commission doesn't want to remove any of those items for individual discussion, the appropriate motion would be to approve item 13A through 13H.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda, item 13A through 13H.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed.
I think we're ready for commission reports.
All right, so Commissioner Hertz, we'll start with Commissioner Unruh.
So I just wanted to say thank you for the pre-meeting, it was really well done, just some really innovative ideas about getting housing into Garden City, and I know that's one of our big commission goals, and so anything we can do to help that happen. I can't remember the acronym now, is that A U D? Anyway, I can't remember all the acronyms, there's too many. But I thought that the report was really well done. Just also, this weekend's coming up, there's a lot of graduations I know here in Garden City and in the area, so I mean, we just want to be very careful. I know that we have a lot of people in town, and so it's, you know, when people come, this is really an opportunity to showcase Garden City, and a lot of people come and they forget things, and so they shop our stores, and so I love it that our sales tax is so incredible, and I love how Mayor Ortiz always talks about shopping local, shopping off and then shopping local. Also, just the road construction on Kansas Avenue, yeah, just be really careful, I know that the police are helping, keeping it safe, and so just be, you know, if there's a way to go around, that's really, just a really good idea. And with that, I just want to say congratulations to Sealan and Corey, they really keep us online. We have a new system running on the backend of our agendas, and so for some of us, we're struggling, but they've been very kind and patient, helping us do that, but they really do a lot of work for us, and so congratulations, and thank you for all that you do. I also just want to say, you know, I thought this was really interesting, I was at a conference this last week, oh, I did want to say thank you to the Fennett Foundation, what an incredible gift. I mean, year after year after year, I mean, you know, I mean, it's, they don't have to give it, and it's not expected, but when they do, I mean, what a gift it has been to Garden City, and so how they've really increased just everything that happens here in Garden City. So the last thing I want to end with is, I was at a conference, and they were talking about, they gave some very compelling arguments for reducing speeds in communities, and I mean, and I'll get the whole list of it and give it to whoever, but I thought it was really interesting, in Manhattan, they're going to start a 20th plenty, no, I'm not saying we're going to do that, but I did think it was really interesting. I mean, the savings on the roads and then accidents and all these different things that they really brought up, but I thought was really interesting on some of our streets, and when Mike was talking about putting a crosswalk on Mary Street, which is, that's a very busy street, you know, I was thinking about this idea of, you know, sometimes slower traffic is, really does make a difference, but I thought that was a really interesting opportunity for them to really make their community more walkable and bikeable, and they're really thinking about, so how do we also preserve costs on our roads and streets? So just something I thought was really interesting, I'll get those, the notes from the lady about that, but I thought it was really a compelling argument about how reduce speeds, even 10 miles an hour in some areas can really just increase, decrease costs and increase safety. So, and that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Next, we'll have Commissioner Sessna.
Just wanted to mention that board candidates are being sought for Fennett County Economic Development. There, I saw on Facebook, there was a post from that, and it's for the board for Fennett County Economic Development. We approved one position, but the commission is seeking to approve for another position on that board, so the deadline is, let me look at this post right quick, I think it was May 15th is to get it back to Fennett County Economic Development. Cybot Premier Community Award, that's pretty great, it's a nice award that we can put in our showcase, but another great award for our community, you know, up against pretty big communities and everything. Sales tax collection doing well in the community, we're about 12 and a half percent ahead of where we were last April. So again, like Commissioner Unruh said, and Commissioner, or Mayor Ortiz always says, remember to shop and fly locally. Talking about fly locally, just wanted to mention again that we're on track to set another record, it looks like, for employments at the airport. Terminal is looking really nice, and what a great front door for our community. And that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sessna. Next, we'll go to Commissioner Landra.
I just want to repeat what the other commissioners said as well regarding to continue shopping local and also to fly local as well. I want to say happy Professional Municipal Clerks Week to our clerks, do a tremendous job, and thank you. Also want to wish this coming week a happy National Police Week, and also happy about public utility as well. Also, I just want to say thank you to the Fennett Foundation for their award, $130,000, it's greatly appreciated, it definitely helps our community, it's a great part to have. Also, want to say congrats to the graduates of Garden City Community College's 104th college class, who had their graduation last Friday. I know you will make not only a difference in our community, but a difference in the world, so look forward to what the future has for you. And finally, just want to say that this Sunday is Mother's Day, so I want to say thank you to all the mothers out there, and also especially thank you to one who's very special to me, that is my mother. So, with that, I think that's everything I have.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Landra. Now we'll have Commissioner Nguyen.
Yeah, a huge thank you to Jared for today's presentation. I'm Derek Matt, and Jared, thank you for meeting with me yesterday, but also the weeks to come for preparing for this hectic, hectic budget season. A huge thank you to both Sealan and Corey for keeping us all organized. I know for a fact that our meetings would not go well if it weren't for them. This is the first year ever for the City Bot Awards, so I think we need to put that into perspective, like this is the inaugural year for the award. I mean, it is such a competitive award, because not only were we in the standing, but Washington DC, Sanford County, these are amazing communities that definitely have been alive for a lot longer than we have, and for us to receive it is so awesome. I think we also have Yemi and her team preparing such a strong diversity communication strategy for us. On a personal note, it's been quite a few busy weeks for me. I was honored to be the keynote speaker for a few events, first, Fidluak Scholarship on April 20th, and the Real Men Real Leaders 12 Annual Banquet on April 26th, and also the Leader in Me Family Night, Egerd Schud Walker, this past Wednesday. I also spoke at the Queer Fair at BSIC, advocating for more mayors, like Manny Ortiz here, her mayor. But it was also amazing to see how many students recognize members of the commission and our mayor. Lastly, last week, this past Saturday, I had a really special privilege to lead about 40 middle schoolers and high schoolers for a really awesome community service project. We worked at home up on Ninth Street, and we benefited a lot from the city's rent and truck program. They worked so hard to turn a messy yard into something that was so beautiful. It was such a joy to see so many young people give up their Saturday afternoon and make a difference in the community they live in. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Nguyen.
All right, so I won't repeat everything, but ditto for all the comments and the words given. Yeah, the City Bot was one that's pretty amazing to compete against those other communities, so yes, and then also, the one that wasn't mentioned was the Drink Water Week, I think that one was left out, but that started on my birthday, May 5th, so let's start there. No, but it was a very busy weekend, and I just, thanks to everyone, staff, to put the budgets together to get Jared so that he can present to us, and so appreciate all of that. I know it's an heavy eye that, we got to listen to that, but it is gotten better, I like the new program, the way it kind of drafts it out, and so it's easy to follow, so I appreciate that software. Also, I'd just like to mention, I have some items here on my report, and I'll list, I'll name them, but I think I'll send in an email to staff so that maybe we can get some further information on, but I've been talking to a lot of people. One of the questions here is on the 5% sales tax that's coming up for the vote in the ballot August 6th. I was asked about the history of that sales tax, like what came about to have that in place? And I actually got with Assistant City Manager Derek, and he explained to me the history of that was an event that, a tragic event back in 1990, I believe it was, that mid-'90s winter storm. Yeah, they actually kind of needed to have something in place to kind of pay for those disasters that happened to streets and things clearing out and making a mess of things. But, so that was, that's the history of that, and I just wanted to, I was asked for that information, but I might get something in writing here to kind of just pass along to that constituent of mine to offer that explanation. The other one was, the other few, State Theater, Sports of the World, the sirens, and then the Dusty Trail Hotel, those are kind of others that were, I'd like to, I had some questions about, and I kind of follow up, I'll follow up with staff on what they're actually specifically asking for, but so that way I can just kind of pass that information on to. With the tornado sirens, I think, I don't know who can explain it, but there was, somebody had explained it to me that there's a, there's a certain length of time that that goes off, and then it stops, and then it goes off again, and then that's indication that's in the county versus being in the city. I don't know if that's true, I told them I'd follow up on that, so if there's anybody that can help with explaining the sirens on how long that they were supposed to go off, and I know Friday, I was in the, I was at Buffalo Wild Wings, and, you know, people were just talking and scrambling about what do we do, and so I sent out a few texts, but and I kind of assured them that it was, that indicated it was in the county, so Chief, yeah, you want to come up and maybe explain a little bit about the sirens, if there are a distinguished sound or tone that they have?
So what I'll do is I'll send an email, that way you have something in writing.
Yes.
It's something, it's a project that we're working on, and we're in progress right now, trying to upgrade maybe the siren system that we have. Currently, there's, I'm going to just give you a brief overview.
Sure.
There's three different siren systems, so the city, Southland, and the airport, and the law enforcement. So what happens is if there's a more National Weather Service or a spotter sees a tornado, then the tornado, the sirens are sounded, dispatch has to manually activate each one of those. So we're in the process right now, researching what new siren systems look like and cost, and that's kind of a joint effort between my mayorhead, boat ports, boat utilities, and the police department. So it's an ongoing effort. I'll send you an email.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Maybe for right now, the protocol would be all three siren systems sound for any NWS alert or spotter verified alert anywhere in Fennett County. So if it was northeast Garden City, moving east, and Garden City wasn't necessarily in an imminent threat of being hit by that tornado, the outdoor warning siren would still be sounded.
Okay.
Just as if a tornado warning that interrupts your cable television that says Fennett County's in a, you know, it may give some more detail about where it's headed, but when it puts the National Weather Service alert for a tornado warning and lists the county, it's listing the entire county.
Appreciate that, yeah, I know there were just a lot of people asking about, this is kind of the season that we have a lot of these events happening, so they were asking where we can find that information, or if it's available on our website and things, but thank you, yeah.
It says on the top, or is it?
Okay, I knew it was coming, I knew it was coming, so I appreciate the explanation. Thank you, Chief. Also, I'd like to kind of just end on the Single the Mile Event Parade this weekend, that was, it was, it was well-attended, but I heard that it's been well-attended before, but I think that maybe had to do with the weather being cold for the parade, but the event at the park was amazing. I was asked to do the emceeing for that event, and it brought back a lot of memories, just kind of, I was honored to be that emcee at that event, so it just kind of, starting there with the history.
I was just going to follow up on one other thing that you kind of mentioned, Mayor.
So just kind of a little bit of background on my, it was my birthday, so this weekend's been pretty busy, but it was my birthday on Sunday, starting with Friday, on May 3rd was my youngest daughter's birthday, so happy birthday to her on May 3rd, and then Single the Mile Parade was on Saturday, and then my birthday actually got topped with my daughter's graduation party. So, but I was honored to do that for her too, celebrating, you know, your kids is something that you really, really enjoy, and she was really appreciative of that, to kind of tell me that, she told me thanks, like, for doing that. That was, that was just an awesome, you know, compliment that she gave me, for all the hard work that we did, so that we can have that for her. But yeah, Single the Mile Parade was great, I just love the rich culture that's here in Garden City, just the multiple diversity that we bring to Garden City, so I just, I mean, I'd like to continue that as best we can and kind of move forward with the communications and things that we can do for those other cultures to help them celebrate that, you know, that rich and vibrant culture that they have amongst themselves, so in Garden City. So I just continue to work with them and communicate with them, so that's, that's all I had on my agenda, but I'll follow up with a lot of these questions to staff so that we can maybe get some of these questions answered for them, so appreciate the time.
Well, I helped out at the sales information tent during the first Food Truck Friday, and we were providing information about the sales tax. There are brochures out there, so maybe if staff could get us a couple of those brochures that we could have on hand, that we could hand out if we're out and about. It has a lot of good information about the sales tax, and what it's about, and what we'll be using it for. And we'll be at a number of other events around the community, throughout the community, informing people what it's about. So I just wanted to kind of mention that, that there is a brochure out there that has a lot of information about what this sales tax is for, and it's a continuation, it's not a new tax, it's just a continuation of the half-cent sales tax that we've had for many years.
Yeah, thank you for following up with that, so with that, if there's any more comments, we'll go ahead and, I think we'll kind of have a little break before we go into executive session, maybe a few minutes.
Do we want to make a motion?
Yeah, we want to make a motion for that, so anybody want to?
How long, like 10 minutes, or 5 minutes, or 10 minutes, 5 minutes?
No, I think just-
For recess?
Yeah, just a 5-minute recess, and then we'll go into executive session.
With Matt.
2:55.
Yeah, 2:55, is that good?
Yeah, how long, how long do you want?
About 2:55, we'll go from up, what do you think, 45 minutes?
45 minutes?
Yeah. So it'll take us from 2:55 to-
2:40, 3:40.
3:40, wouldn't it?
Nice.
Walk, Matt.
You got it.
It's 3:00.
Mayor, I move that the governing body move into executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1 pertaining to personal matters of non-eligible personnel and their contractual obligations and purposes of the city manager's evaluation. If this matter were discussed in open session, it may invade the privacy of those discussed beginning at 2:55, ending at, sorry, yes, 2:55, ending at 3:40, with our city attorney, Jennifer Cunningham, and Matt Allen.
No, I don't know him, sorry.
Not Jennifer.
Not me.
Just Matt Allen.
Second.
We don't want her.
There's been a motion and a second, any further discussion?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed.
It does seem like I'm on most of them, so I totally understand.
Yeah, yeah.
It seems like, yeah, yeah, then there's just trouble, yeah, it sounds like.
Well, then you should ask for 55.